Good evening and welcome to the Monthly Board of Education Meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the open session of the Board of Education for June 26, 2025. At this time, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. We'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone this evening to our Board of Education meeting, and we will begin tonight with Ms. Pam Parker. Can we have a roll call, please, for the last time?
Chair Cobb.
Here.
Vice Chair Perezza.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams is not present. Tammy Old.
Present.
Angelique Boylan.
Present.
Valerie Boggs. Sharon Morden is not present.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Old, would you please read our Ethics Awareness Statement?
Yes, ma'am. Welcome to the June 26, 2025, Meeting of the Elizabeth City Pasquotank Board of Education. It is my duty to remind members of the Board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of North Carolina General Statutes. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the Board today? If there are no conflicts, let the record reflect that no conflicts exist.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Now we need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Perezza. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Who was that? Okay, thank you, Ms. Boylan, for that second. Do we have any discussion on the agenda for this evening? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands to approve our agenda for this evening. Let the record reflect that is unanimous for those present. Okay, we're going to begin our agenda tonight with recognition, so I am going to turn over the meeting now to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us here this evening. We're excited for the recognitions we have on the agenda, and we're going to kick it off with Elementary Field Day Volunteers, and Central is our first place Field Day winner, going right into our mathematics and then our special recognition by the Chair. So we'll go in that order and proceed, and welcome Dr. Waples.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair Perezza, Board members, and our community. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Central Elementary School. They won our first county field day. We hadn't had county field day since 2012, so with a lot of work from a lot of volunteers, teamwork, schools, our wonderful superintendent, we were able to make it work. So tonight, we would like to celebrate Central, who took first in our first county field day. Central students, please join us. Next up, Mr. Joshua Sawyer would like to recognize our secondary math teachers.
Good evening, Board Chair, Assistant Board Chair, Board members, everyone that is here on tonight. The importance of mathematics instruction in our schools cannot be overestimated. To emphasize this reality, the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction strive to recognize and reward mathematics teachers who exemplify mathematics teaching excellence by nurturing students' enthusiasm for mathematics through everyday classroom experiences. This recognition is for those teachers who succeed in motivating students to excel in mathematics. ECPPS is proud to recognize the following teachers from our secondary schools. Teachers, please come forward to receive your certificate when your name is called. And first up from River Road, we have Ms. Auburn Stevens. She's not here on this evening. From the Early College, Ms. Liz Woden. From Northeastern High School, Ms. Jodi Ann Williams. From Pasquotank County High School, Ms. Sylvia Carver. From Elizabeth City Middle School, Ms. Charlotte Riddick, and our principal is here, on behalf. Each public school unit selects one outstanding teacher to receive a one-year's membership to the NCCTM, a personalized award in recognition at the NCCTM State Conference in Winston-Salem. In addition, his or her name will appear on the Fall 2025 issue of the NCCTM Journal called The Centroid and on NCCTM's website. Tonight, we are proud to announce that Ms. Sylvia Carver has been selected as our district honorary.
Again, it's always weird to be on the side of things. Tonight, you are here on a very special evening because you are witnessing the end of an era. Pam Parker, can you come up here, please? There are so many things that I could tell you about this lady. Some are really wonderful, some would probably get us in a lot of trouble, but I just want to say on behalf of the Board that we could not be the school board that we are without Pam Parker's support and continual just sheer love. She has worked with us and taken care of us and fed us and loved on us and let us sit in her office on the floor and have a little bit of a breakdown, and whatever was needed, she has done that for us. And she has earned the right to walk on the retired side, which is a beautiful place to be. And so we just wanted to honor her this evening and let her know beyond a shadow of a doubt how much we love you and how much you are appreciated. And now I'm going to invite Dr. Parker up to come say a couple of things as well. Nope. I love you, girl.
I want to say a couple of things that I shared some of this the other day when we had lunch with Pam, so I'm going to share some things that were on my heart then and they still are now. But Pam, I'm incredibly grateful for everything that you have done for the school system and for what you've done for me and the Board. And you're an incredible person that cares deeply about public education, this community, and you're a hard worker, and you have done so much for the school system, but above all those things, you're just a great person. And for that, we're so thankful for what you've done and looking forward to what comes next. I'll share this really quickly, but of course, we share the same last name, Parker. And when I first got here in 2022, I think it was about three or four days into me being here, and someone called the central office and they had a concern that they were sharing, and it got passed on to our office, and it was a voicemail that got forwarded to me, and the person was just letting somebody have it. And at the end, they said, oh, and by the way, there's one more thing. I think it's illegal for that new superintendent to have hired his wife as his secretary. And so I knew then we were just going to be just a great team, Pam, so Pam said they didn't know it was my mother, but, you know, in a lot of ways, and that, and so many other things, I am so thankful for what Pam's done for. So Pam, go into this next chapter and have the wonderful memories you take with you. Come see us, have lunch with us. You've got a couple that are on the other side with you, so just don't get in trouble if you, you know, hang out with them and don't let them influence you. But we're so proud of you and thank you for everything you've done, and we're going to take a photo with the Board over here. Let's give Pam a round of applause.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parker. We do not have anyone who has signed up for public comment tonight, so we will go ahead and move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things that I would share this evening. One is we have completed our summer school retest program as of last week, so I want to thank everybody that worked extremely hard to make that a very successful program, and we're really excited to see the successes that a lot of our students made in that opportunity to our Child Nutrition Department, to our Transportation Department, our principals, our teachers, technology that provided the devices for students to work on, to our Curriculum Department that rallied together to be able to organize that. I just want to say thank you to everybody for the hard work you put into all of those things. I also want to say on the way of congratulating people for their work in service, I do want to recognize publicly Mr. Sammy Fudge, whose last day with us will be July 2nd. And so Sammy is taking a leadership opportunity in Virginia that is 10 minutes from his house and in a school he served at, and so we're mad at Sammy for leaving us, but we're also happy, and I want to congratulate him for having an opportunity for being able to go back and serve in his community. So if you have had an opportunity to work with Sammy, you know that he is an extremely sincere and humble person and somebody who loves kids and doing the right thing by kids. And I actually was talking with a former parent of Central when Sammy was principal there today, and the parent brought up Sammy's name and said that my student loved Mr. Fudge when he was the principal, and I was giving Sammy compliments on his work there. So Sammy, thank you for everything you have done for ECPS and for the hours and the investment and the time and energy. You're going to be deeply missed, but just know that we send with you all the love and support and are cheering you on as you move into this next opportunity. So let's give a round of applause for Sammy. A couple of things I'll share here. I had an opportunity today to attend a change of command at the United States Coast Guard for the Aviation Preparation Group, the Aviation Projects Acquisition Center, which is the division of the Coast Guard that ensures that the aircraft are mission-ready, are maintained or serviced, and are trained and ready to go. And Captain Jessica Barrera is retiring, and we have welcomed the incoming captain, which is Ryan Angelo, into that and had an opportunity to speak with the incoming commander of the Acquisition Center. And we're excited that we have this year had students that have completed internships at the Aviation Logistics Center, and Captain Angelo is excited about getting some opportunities for our high school students to do internships in his aircraft hangar next year. So what an incredible opportunity to be in high school and also get to have an internship working on an engine of a C-130 airplane. And so that's a really cool thing, and was excited to welcome the captain to this new role. Want to also say that we have a lot of summer programming that is going on, so check our website or schools if anybody's interested in that. Through programming, through camps, you'll see some of our school buses on the road throughout the summer. I want to thank Amanda and team for all the work that they're doing. We've got partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club and Parks and Rec, and we're supporting both of those community organizations because we've got students in those programs, as well as our own reading camps and other things. And PW Moore Elementary School will have students in their 21st Century Camp every weekday of the summer all year long. And so we, you know, somebody told me the other day, they said, you know, I know that you guys love the summer when you work in education, and unfortunately, we don't have a summer break. We are moving at 100 with a lot of these great things, and it's exciting that we're able to provide these opportunities for our students throughout the year, that the school year doesn't have to end through our camps and other programming, that students can still engage the summer. I think that's great. So to everybody who's making that possible, I want to say thank you. Two last things. One is I want to thank Ms. Reinhardt and her team for the work that they have done on our summer feeding program. I think we, what, we've been two weeks into that or twice, right? Had an opportunity to go on the kickoff Friday for that at the public library, but any child in Pasquotank County can come and get a nutritious meal, a pack of five meals, seven meals, get that at the public library on Fridays. And Ms. Reinhardt and our staff prepare that food, and we take it, and I think on the first day, we distributed 350, 350 containers of meals, and then we ran out, and so now we've increased that significantly. And so this is at no cost to anybody. It's a part of what our Child Nutrition is able to do, and so I think that's wonderful. The first day that they did it, they were giving out the meals, and they had some staff there painting the faces of some of the kids there. They were getting face painting. They were able to get books that we were handing out that we had, we were able to give to the students. So a really great thing, they'll be going on all summer on the Friday. So Tammy, thank you for all of that. And I also want to say that Tammy was recently sworn in and elected by her peers in the North Carolina School Nutrition Association as the 2025-26 President of the Association. So congratulations, Ms. Reinhardt. And Ms. Ains and I had an opportunity to celebrate with Tammy at that, and we were there with about 1,000 Child Nutrition staff from across the state, and we were just overwhelmed with how much the room was filled of people that love what they do. And so thank you, thank you so much, Tammy, for all you and your team do. The last piece here is the Board had an opportunity this afternoon to interview a series of rising 12th graders for our incoming student board member positions. We had some extremely talented young people that the Board was able to hear this afternoon in the interview process, and we're at a point now of making a recommendation for our incoming student board members. And so I'm going to defer to Vice Chair Perezza to update us on that and then ask for a motion for the Board to approve those incoming board members.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. As Dr. Parker said, we had several rising seniors complete the application process for our three student board member positions. Tonight, we held nine interviews, and the Board reviewed this information and their interview performance in closed session. Based on this information, I would like to make the following motion. I would like to make a motion to select the following students for student board members of the Elizabeth City Pasquotank Board of Education for the 2025-26 school year. For the Elizabeth City Early College, Natalie Gallup, and alternate, Demira Byram. For Pasquotank County High School, Cheyenne Barrett, and alternate, Marissa Norman. For Northeastern High School, Catherine Hutto, and alternate, Genesis Perez Sanchez.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
Second.
The motion by Ms. Perezza, second by Ms. Boylan. Any discussion on the motion? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect for those present that that is unanimous.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Perezza. Dr. Parker, did you have anything further?
The conclusion of remarks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Next, we're going to move on to the approval of our consent agenda. We need a motion for that, please.
I make a motion that the consent agenda be approved as written.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Old. We have that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Any discussion on our consent agenda for this evening? If not, can we please see a positive vote for the consent agenda by show of hands? Ms. Parker, let the record reflect that that vote is unanimous for those present. And also, let the record reflect that the Chair of the School Board does not vote unless there is a tie. Thank you. Now, on our agenda, we are on unfinished business. And so, I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Haynes, and she is going to discuss that one item with us.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, board members, good evening. Tonight, in unfinished business, we are asking the Board to approve the policy that was presented for first read at the last meeting. And that is Policy 5220 for collections and solicitations. Are there any questions about the recommended revisions?
Okay, seeing no questions, do we have a motion to approve of Policy 5220?
I so move.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Any further questions or discussion for Ms. Haynes considering this policy revision? If not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that is unanimous. Thank you. And now, we're going to turn things over to Dr. Parker for our new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a list of items for new business. So, we're going to start with the Global Leaders Update. So, for our directors that are presenting some of the items here, we'll kick it off with the Global Leaders, and then just come forward as your item is there, ready.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, board members. I'm here this evening just to ask for Board approval. As we continue to expand our global leadership program, our initial quote did not include addition of ECMS for the 25-26 school year. So, we're asking that the Board will approve ECMS for the 25-26 school year, and initial quote, an amount of $10,000 to be added to that initial quote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fudge. Board members, just for your record, we are going to go through each one of these new business items individually to do motions, since they are, some of them are so unrelated. So, we're going to look at this first item, Item A, the Global Leaders for ECMS, and I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Item A, Global Leaders, ECMS.
Thank you, Vice Chair Perezza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Any other discussion on motion for Item A? If not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Fudge.
Thank you.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, board members. I come before you this evening seeking approval for some repairs needed for EMS Middle School mechanical system damaged primarily through electrical surges we've received at the school. We've been having some SNC issues with those three schools in the area from a single phasing that occurred on March, during March of this year. So, tonight, we're seeking $76,923.35 to do a significant repair for mechanical system at that school. This will realize a savings of over $13,000 because we have two different portions of the system that have been damaged. And we'll realize that savings of $13,000 from having to do one repair and doing both of, well, there are two repairs, but doing them at the same time for this price.
Okay, so now, we are looking for a motion to approve Item B.
I make a motion to approve Item B, electrical repairs at ECMS.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Any further discussion or questions considering this motion? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, board members, Dr. Parker. The first thing I have tonight is our milk bid. It's a renewal. The milk bid is a coalition between our schools and Currytuck. And it begins August the 1st and lasts, and goes through July 31st. No, I'm sorry. And it was awarded to Mail last year. So, this is the second renewal, or the second year of renewal.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. We need a motion to approve Item C.
Motion to approve Item C, milk bids.
Thank you, Vice Chair Perezza. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Old, thank you. Any further discussion or questions for Ms. Reinhardt? Okay, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous.
The second thing I have is a renewal bid for Cisco Hampton Roads, Virginia. And it would cover groceries, supplies, and all fresh produce. This is a co-op with the Northeastern North Carolina, Bertie, Camden, Chawan, Currytuck, Dare, Gates, Hurtford Hyde, Proquemmons, Martin, Tyrell, Washington, and Elizabeth City-Pasco-Tank.
Okay, so we now need a motion for Item D.
I move that we adopt Northeastern North Carolina co-op bid.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Boggs. Any further discussion or questions considering this motion for Ms. Reinhardt? If not, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous.
Thank you. The last thing I have tonight is a quote for River Road for the serving line replacement. This will replace a serving line, the original serving line in 1997. So, it's been a goodie, but it's spent its time. After about 12 quotes, we landed on the best serving line possible at the best price, and that was $81,855. And it awarded, with your approval, to Singer out of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
I have one question about that. Will that work be done and ready for the start of the school year?
We hope so.
Okay.
If not, they said that they'll do it on a Friday and get it completed over the weekend.
Okay. All right, we need a motion for Item E.
I make a motion to be approve Item E.
Okay. Sec-, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion considering this motion? If not, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt, for all you do for us. And thank you. Congratulations on your new role.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, distinguished board members, and Dr. Parker. Within your packet this evening is a brief summary of the Consolidated Application for Federal Funding, which includes an overview of the four title programs and activities for each, which include Title I to assist disadvantaged students in meeting academic standards, Title II to improve teacher and administrator quality, Title III for language acquisition and multilingual learners, and Title IV for student support and academic enrichment. Our goals for federal programs and the district include continued improvement to increase reading, math, and science proficiency while meeting or exceeding growth by all students in kindergarten through 12th grades, to continue to increase effectiveness of teachers and administrators through research-based professional development, increasing proficiency in language development for multilingual learners, and increasing parent engagement through district and school activities that educate parents on how to assist their child at home, as well as to become more involved in the decision-making opportunities. Also included is how we monitor these goals and strategies within the Consolidated Application, and the estimated budget to support this plan and activities. The table of planning allocations indicates the individual total for each of our four title programs with a combined total of $3,038,931.81. It is also important to note that the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has cautioned districts that planning allotments are subject to change based on actions at the federal level. If changes occur, we will make adjustments to these budgets and present them to the Board through monthly finance reports. We are respectfully requesting the Board's approval to submit the Consolidated Application for ECPPS. And with that approval, we anticipate to have the application ready to submit by the end of July.
Okay, can we get a motion for Item F, please?
I'm motion to approve Item F, Consolidated Federal Grant.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Boggs. Can we get a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Perezza. Any further discussion or questions for Ms. Bundy? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Bundy.
The next item on the list is Item G, the 2025-26 Board of Education Meeting Calendar. The meeting calendar presented follows Board policy, with the meetings being on Fourth Monday, held here at the Pasco-Tank Early Learning Center, with the regular meeting at 6:00 and closed session at 5:00. Are there any questions about the calendar?
No, there's just one correction. On the June 25th, it should be 2026 on the last one.
Okay.
Okay, can we have a motion for Item G?
I make a motion and be accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Any other questions for Ms. Haynes concerning the calendar? If not, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Good evening. Item H tonight is the Micro Purchase Threshold Certification. This is something that we've been doing since the beginning of ESTER Funds. It allows us to put in a threshold of $50,000 so that we do not have to go and do competitive bids lower than, from between 30 and 50. And this is specifically for federal funds. So, this is the same resolution that's been passed for several years.
Okay. Can we get a motion for Item H?
I make a motion to accept Item H.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Any other questions for Ms. Tilly, or discussion? If not, please signify your positive vote. We have a vote of three to one. Did he, did he raise his hand?
I don't know. Oh.
Okay, okay. That's unanimous. You're throwing me off there, Mr. Old. All right. So, you're good.
Okay. Okay. Next item is the 25-26 Payroll Calendar. This just outlines the dates that we'll be paying our employees and the different categories of times that we have to pay by.
Okay. So, we need a motion for Item I?
I so move that we approve Item I.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Old. Any other questions for Ms. Tilly concerning the payroll calendar? If not, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the 25-26 Insurance Renewal for Errors and Admissions and General Liability Policy. That's with the North Carolina School Boards Trust. The total premium for this year will be $12,346.
Okay. Ms. Tilly, can we go ahead and include K and L in that, since they all three are similar category?
Sure. So, the next one is Automobile, Inland, and Marine. The total premium for next year is $29,064. That, too, is with the North Carolina School Boards Trust Fund. And then finally, Workers' Comp and Cyber Insurance. We use Surrey Insurance Company. And this year's premiums for Workers' Comp is $442,914. And cyber is $23,725. And I would like to point out that is a reduction in premiums, surprisingly.
Okay, thank you. So, now, we need a motion to approve Items J, K, and L.
Motion to approve Items J, K, and L.
Okay, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Perezza. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Any other questions or discussion considering Items J, K, or L? If not, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous. Okay?
Okay. Next is the 25-26 Interim Budget Resolution. This allows us to continue operations as they currently exist, beginning Tuesday, July 1. We do this every year so that we can keep operating.
Okay. Can we have a motion for Item M?
I make a motion to approve Item M.
Okay, we have that motion by Mr. Old. Can I get a second?
I.
Thank you. And any discussion questions? Any questions or discussion on Item M? If not, please signify that positive vote by a show of hands. That is unanimous. Okay?
The next is the Authorization for the Superintendent to Approve Any Last-Minute Year-In Budget Amendments. I would like to let the Board know that the Finance Department today pretty much finished up year-end closeout. They did an outstanding job. And I think, if it's okay, I would like to just recognize those people before we approve this, because they're the ones that made it happen. Meredith Collins, Susan Morris, Ashley Nixon, Amy Bundy, Sandy Kinzel worked really, really, really hard to get to that point today. So, we don't think we're going to need this resolution, but we would like you to approve it, just in case.
You forgot Candy Tilly.
Well.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion for Item N. Okay, a second? Okay. Questions, discussion on Item M? I'm sorry, Item N. Okay, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous.
Last year, ECPPS decided to partner with the YMCA, beginning this school year, to offer after-school enrichment program. At the conclusion of the program, after all expenses were paid, we had $141,181.44 remaining in that account. We are asking permission from the Board to transfer those funds to our local bank account into a restricted account that will, we will determine at a later date what we will use that for. We're thinking right now, summer school, but that's not for sure. But we can come back to the Board once we determine the best use of the funds.
Okay, can I get a motion for Item O?
I make a motion to accept it.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second, a motion from Old, second from Boggs. And then, do we need other questions answered or any discussion? If not, please signify your positive vote. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Woman Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, distinguished board members, Superintendent Parker. I come before you this evening to present information in regards to the NC DPI, Alternative Schools Modified Accountability Systems Options for the 2025- Schools Modified Accountability Systems Options for the 2025-26 school year. The Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System was developed to provide additional accountability information on eligible schools and to supplement the school performance grade as defined by General Statute 115(c)(8315). Schools identified by this system continue to be part of the accountability reporting and are required to be included in the assessment participation reporting. According to North Carolina ESAA State Plan, all schools receive a school performance grade for identification, comprehensive support, and improvement schools, and targeted support improvement schools. For schools participating in Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System under Option B or C, this school performance grade will be reported as required under ESAA for these eligible schools, but will not be included in school report cards or school performance grade reporting. For this upcoming year, we are requesting that HLTRID Community School returns all of their students' data to their home-based schools within our LEA. HLTRID Community School will be given the letter grade of the school where the highest percentage of students are sent back. Since HLTRID participates in the modified system, ECPPS must submit this request annually. For the 24-25 school year and all previous school years, ECPPS has selected this option for HLTRID Community School. Being that the end goal for our students at HLTRID is to successfully graduate and receive their high school diplomas and/or transition back to their home school, the Testing and Accountability Department would like to present Option B for the 25-26 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System. With that being said, we are asking that the members of our board take action on this request and move forward with Option B. At this time, if you have any questions, please feel free to share them.
Okay, we now need a motion for Item P.
Motion to approve Item P, 2025-26 Alternative Schools Modified Accountability System as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Griffin concerning this or any discussion? If not, please show your positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, school board members, Dr. Parker, and guests. Tonight, I come before you with the proposal, proposed contracts for the 25-26 school year. Couple of highlights. Last year, we had nineteen contracts total for services. This year, we'll have eight. Most of, we will also be adding on like a bilingual evaluator for psych and for speech services to kind of help with the, the ELL population, to make sure that we're making good decisions for our students. We'll have three in-person, so, speech pathologists this year, which is a benefit. A lot of our kids do need that level of service for, for that. And everything that we'll be providing to our service, our students as far as services from school psychs, school social, schools, speech pathologists, OTPT, all of those services are Medicaid billable. So we'll be able to bill Medicaid for a lot of the services and evaluations that we do provide for our students. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, let me know.
All right, so can we get a motion for Item Q?
Motion to approve Item Q, EC contracts, 2025-26.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, if not, please show a positive vote with a show of hands.
Chair Cobb, I'm staying.
Okay. Ms. Parker, please record three unanimous, or three votes yes and one abstention, please. So, and also record a positive vote from the Chair. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our new business this evening. Before we do our final motion, we'd just like to say thank you so much to everyone in the audience. Know you worked really hard to close out this fiscal year, and we just really want you to know that we appreciate you very, very much. Now, we are at the portion of our meeting where we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion this evening? If not, please show your positive vote. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Yeah, I guess that release we ever got out, how many marks?
Yeah, I mean.
Can you believe that?
Just when they're getting good.
I know. Oh, it's time for me to go home. Okay. John, take care of yourself, okay?
I'm gonna miss you.
Yeah, take care of yourself. Yes.
Guess we'll have to find somebody else named Parker to replace you, so.